I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the religion and justice for all.
We're going to dispense with the agenda for a minute. Today, I had to make a serious decision and I had to call a state of emergency for the city of Ketchikan. We're under a technical martial law. As you can tell, councilmember Zingy isn't here, Mayor Amalon's not here, Chief Joe White is not here. They had some objections to my rulings and they have been detained. Myself and my son, I mean Andrew, I mean Lieutenant Branson will be-
Chief Branson, yeah.
-will be administering the emergency. This is all due to an anonymous phone call I got this morning from Oregon. The person informed me that we've had a Mayor Bob in Ketchikan and we don't need another. I agreed with him profusely, but probably for different reasons. And so I guess before I can lift this, I need assurances from Mayor-elect Severson that we're not going to have another Mayor Bob. A Mayor John, a Mayor Paul, Mayor Ringo, anybody. Can we get that assurance?
We can get that assurance, yes.
All right. Andrew, can you call Jessica of Ketchikan Correctional and let her know that she can let those three individuals go to the ground? Just tell them it was a misunderstanding. I just wanted to highlight Bob's exciting victory and I'm so happy to have this as my last regular meeting. He'll be taking over and I guess we should get back to business instead of me making jokes. It is communications. We have a new business request on the showbar water may leak. And then persons to be heard, I have, is it Dana?
Dave.
If I can't read your writing, I apologize. Dave, please. Where are you? Come on up.
Came in under martial law tonight. Well, good evening. My name's Dave Reeves and I'm the business manager of the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers Local 1547. I'm also the co-chair of our pension, health and welfare, legal and apprenticeship trust funds. And first off, I want to thank all of you for your public service and for serving the community of Ketchikan. Some background on myself and IBW Local 1547. I'm a lifelong Alaskan and 21-year member of the IBW. I'm a journeyman lineman by trade and I've worked statewide in construction and utilities. I'm married with three boys ages 18, 15 and 13 and we currently reside in Wasilla. Local 1547 represents over 4,300 members statewide in over 75 contracts at utilities, in constructions, in city and boroughs, at hospitals, in classifications ranging from electricians, communication workers, engineers, technicians, power plant operators, mechanics and linemen, just to name a few. With our management construction partner, the National Electrical Contractors Association, we also operate two apprenticeship training facilities, one in Anchorage and one in Fairbanks, where we currently have over 350 apprentices in classifications of electricians, linemen, communication workers and tree trimmers. At these facilities, we also provide journeyman upgrade training to keep up with ever-changing technologies. I'm here tonight to talk about the over 150 members we currently represent at the city of Ketchikan and Ketchikan Public Utilities. The IBW believes in fairness and equality in the work setting, including wages and benefits. Unfortunately, since 2000, our members have fallen further and further behind in wage increases when compared to the cost of living. To further compound this problem, some members of like classifications between the city of Ketchikan and Ketchikan Public Utilities have drastically different wages and benefits but are doing almost identical jobs. In 2013, the council directed that a compensation study be completed and the results of that study showed that these members were behind in the median average by 7.3%. Unfortunately, this compensation study was not acted on at that time and these members are still significantly behind the CPI and peers in like classifications throughout the state. Recently, some classifications at KPU were increased due to this and concern over the ability to retain and recruit employees. While those classifications saw an increase in premium pay, which is a separate amount from their base wage, classifications that did not see an increase that are set off a base wage amount for those classifications did not see any increase. Currently nationwide, there is a shortage of workers and the problem is only going to increase as the baby boomer generation continues to arrive at retirement age. We are seeing this in Alaska and across the United States. Lowering standards to fill positions is not the answer either as you could end up with performance issues and the inability to perform all tasks of a job. Being able to attract and retain employees is already an issue here within the city of Ketchikan and Ketchikan Public Utilities as there are currently 13 open positions. Even on the management side, recruitment has been an issue as my understanding is more often than not, many positions are filled starting at the middle or high end of a tiered wage grade table. There has been money directed at infrastructure and capital projects within the city of Ketchikan within the timeframe from 2000 to present. We are now asking for additional investment in the employees at the city and KPU to catch them up on the cost of living that they have fallen behind in during that time period. With tourism exceeding 1 million visitors this year and an anticipated 1.3 million next year, the city will see additional revenue. Now is the time to put employees first. We are respectfully requesting the council to their direct management to meet with us to review this and all relevant information in order to come up with wages and benefits that are fair, equitable and comparable to their peers that will in turn help retain and attract employees. Thank you all again for your service on the council and to the community of Ketchikan.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Chuck.
Can we redo the password on the laptop?
Hold on a second Chuck, let's do it during the count on the agenda.
Oh.
Because that person didn't hear. We'll call you up here and-
Oh, I thought you were calling me.
Oh, no. Well, I just saw it on the persons to be heard list.
Okay.
You didn't need to sign up there. We got you covered. Thank you, sir.
Do you want me to use your password? It'll be a sharp invitation.
All right. That brings us, well, does anybody else here to speak to the council tonight did not sign up? Anybody who wants to come forward. Come on up, stranger.
Yes, I warned you, Lou.
Jay Rhodes, 3401 South August. I just wanted to take this time to thank Mayor Lou Williams for his years and years of service to this community and I wish you the very best and hope to see you on the street or stop by the office for a cup of coffee.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Anybody else want to speak to the council tonight? Seeing none, we'll move on to the agenda. That brings us out of the consent agenda. I have two items to add, 7, 8, 2 and 3 if you guys don't have a problem with those. That's the budget transfer. And then the salmon. There are no objections. We'll go with those onto the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to consent?
Yeah, I saw moved.
Moved and seconded. Thank you, Dave. That brings us to that quote. Can you read that?
Thought you were going to skip right.
Yeah, I know.
Approval of minutes regular city council meeting of September 20th, 2018. Change order number one final, the contract number 1708. Sea level drive storm drain and surface improvements with Glacier State Contractors Incorporated. Change order number one final, the contract number 1721. 2017 city of Ketchikan roof replacements with Coogan Construction Company. And another change order number one final, the contract number 1811. Fire station number two re-roof project, Coogan Construction Company. Electrical services for Alaska Department of Transportation, Stedman Street Lights, Holiday Lighting Wiring with Ever Electric, DBA Island Electric. Budget transfer for emergency repairs to Bar Harbor Ramp number two trestle and maintenance services for the Taltsi Salmon from Terry Piles.
Okay, anybody have a comment on anything? Hearing none, call the roll.
Kuss?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Severson?
Yes.
Kifer?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. It's nothing. Everyone's just down to no unfinished business. So it brings us to new business 7A1, Tongas Avenue pavement and rehabilitation and pedestrian improvement projects. Take it away, Chuck.
So you've got to put the password in for it.
Do we have the password?
That's the million dollar question.
We're all trying to fix it earlier.
Did it work?
Make sure you turn-
No, not hurt.
No caps. Hopefully, it knows now. It's a top secret.
Well, I'm sure we can change in a couple of weeks.
And in the paper, next week's news, laptops stolen from you.
We've got to turn that on too.
Before changing a password.
We'll discover we're actually in a state of emergency there.
The caps on. Takes a minute.
The lights are all on?
Can you hit some lights in the back there?
I can do that.
Thank you.
This morning, Ziggy said Zingy. Ziggy, my house. Ziggy.
That's the only person she says it now, so he knows it's Ziggy.
I saw you at the sidewalk yesterday. You must have been going on the grass again.
Yes, I know. Of course. I thought it was going to launch. Now they say it's going to send.
It's going to be sent for the next three years. Mayor Severson declares itself. Yeah, I wondered about the Mayor Bob too.
So I'm going to-
Can we change your name, Bob?
So I just wanted to talk about the project that we've had on Water Street and Tongas Avenue. I want to do a bit of a history on the project. The project goes from Holy Creek to the tunnel currently. But we're in the process of breaking that up into three separate projects. I received the project in about 2014 and it's a pretty long project and a pretty complex project and it has a lot of differing dissimilar goals. So that's kind of pushed us into breaking it up into three separate projects, which... So basically, we're going to break it up into three parts. Holy Creek being its own separate project and then the viaducts, Tongas Avenue Viaduct and the Water Street Viaduct being their own separate project. There's a lot of bridge work associated with those. And then the part in the middle, what we're calling Tongas Avenue Improvements, which is more oriented towards pavement rehabilitation. That's going to be its own project and we're going to try to fast track that because of deteriorating condition of the pavement. So the Holy Creek Bridge, just to go through the other projects, I'll focus on Tongas Avenue. Basically, that is to replace Holy Creek. It's in the stip for some time after. It doesn't have a definite time in the stip. It's just beyond 2021. And one of the main challenge of that project will be to maintain traffic during construction. We'll have to do like a half at a time. There's really not much in the way of rerouting possibility. So that's one of the challenges of that project. Tongas Avenue and Water Street Viaduct, that also is in the stip sometime after 2020. I mean, just, those can change, but that's just if you were to open up the stip today, that's how it reads today. And that goes from the north end, what I call the north end of Tongas Avenue Viaduct to the tunnel. And on that project, most of it consists of viaducts. So it's preservation of the structure, pavement rehab and also making improvements to the sidewalks for Americans to comply with Americans with Disability Act. Big picture, both of those structures and Holy Creek, they're on our list of deficient structures. So we're motivated to, especially in East Tewbridge, to prolong the life of them. Replacing those structures would be rather ugly in terms of keeping traffic flowing and things like that. So we want to preserve these structures for as long as possible. So that's the main goal there. And then the part in the middle, and that's the one that we're really trying to get out as soon as possible. Right now, we would really like to get it out under construction for 2019. That's going to be a heavy lift, but that's what we're pushing for right now and I can talk about what some of the challenges are from that. So it's from Holy Creek to the viaduct, the first abutment of the Tongas Avenue Viaduct. And its primary goals are rehabilitation of the pavement, some improvements to the lane configurations and making that portion of Tongas Avenue compliant with Americans with Disabilities Act. So what we would like, so basically, we're kind of like partners since you're the community. It's our facility. It's DOT's facility, but it's in your community. We would like your input before we send out what we call scoping letters out to various agencies, which is what we want to do later on this month. I'll show a schedule here at the end. So these are the improvements that we're considering at the moment. This is what would go out to the agencies. We just want to run this by you and get your input. So basically, from Holy Creek to about where Safeway's at, we'll see exactly where that changes. We're looking at going to a three-lane configuration with a bike lane on each side and in a series of protected crossings. So there was some recent new construction at the hospital and a crosswalk was installed there. And so we would like to make that a protected crosswalk with a refuge median and you'll see a few of those elsewhere. We've used those successfully elsewhere.
Do you want questions now or afterwards?
Feel free to ask questions as I go.
How did you guys come up with the idea that we need a bike lane in Ketchikan on that stretch?
Well, there's several things. One is, you know, as a transportation, I mean, it's a transportation corridor and transportation corridor has several modes. It has vehicles, it has public transit, it has bicycles and also has pedestrians. And so each of those have a level of service associated with them. And also, planning documents, borough planning documents make, you know, making improvements to bike facilities a priority where we make improvements. And also, as we look at the overall functionality of the corridor, we looked at several options in going to a three-lane configuration. For one thing, that gives you room for bike lane. It also makes it easier for pedestrians to cross because you can cross in stages. I can talk about that.
Right.
It has other benefits as well.
And I understand the need for upgrades and an easier way for pedestrians to cross, but my office is along that stretch and probably 90% of our business clients that we have to get out on a daily basis and go visit are on that stretch. And I've seen the traffic and I've experienced the traffic and the last thing we need along that stretch is for you to reduce it by a lane.
Well, okay, so let me talk about that. So what we have is we have, we run into similar issues in Juneau. The lane configuration, the way it is now, we don't really get a lot of bank for our buck. I mean, what we have is a left lane. We have two lanes in each direction and you don't have enough length of that. It changes a lot. So the frequent change of lane configurations reduces the benefit because when you go from one lane configuration to the next, you have to change your lanes. Secondly, you have, effectively, you have two left turn lanes, but they're not, they're offset. And through most of the corridor, you can actually put those in the same place. So you can get more bank for your buck that way and get more, better use of your corridor. And we looked at several different configurations and this seemed to improve the overall performance of the corridor the best.
I'm thinking of the backup that I experienced coming out of Safeway. We need those two left turning lanes because when one's full and you can't make it through that green light, you get in the other one just to be able to turn left with the traffic so you don't-
Are you talking from pulling out of Safeway?
Yes. So that intersection where you're on, basically, if you go straight, you're on Jefferson. Turning left north onto Tongas Avenue, that gets real congested and even worse during the five months that we have cruise ships, four or five months. And even coming down Jefferson, when you're going on Third Avenue and you've got traffic between seven and eight o'clock, people trying to get to work, the one lane gets backed up. So you just go to the other lane, knowing that you have-
So you need to process two cars at a time?
Exactly.
Okay.
Bob?
So I'm opposed to the pedestrian islands. We've had them in Tongas Avenue before. Bottom White Cliff there was one and finally ended up taking it out. First of all, for the state crews, they follow the snow to the center. So then it becomes a, when they have to pick up that snow, it becomes an issue for them because they're going to be trying to go by these islands. And I think with this change of the two lanes and with the speed that we travel, it's all based, of course, on the distance between the cars that I don't think we need a rest area in the middle of those streets. The bike lanes, I don't like them for the simple fact that you have nothing going north and nothing going south after the mall for them to merge into. And so basically, you put that in, I can ride from the hospital to the mall and back again on a bike lane and that's it. So if you encourage that, then you're going to have people where we have parking at both sides of the road, two lanes, very busy, lots of traffic, lots of trucks. And I just don't think Tongas Avenue is conducive to bike traffic, especially when you get into the more congested areas that you go down past Dick Body Shop or other places. So you're going to encourage it by this and then it's going to go nowhere. And, you know, in this particular case here, we're talking, I think, upgrading that to where it has a crossing light. So that would be time to give a pedestrian plenty of time to go across the street. And so again, I don't think the islands are conducive to how traffic works on Tongas Avenue. And we've had them and we've removed them.
There was another issue with the islands for emergency vehicles to get through. When traffic is congested, they use the center line. And if those are in the way, they're driving over.
One of the things when we did our study, we did a, I think it was like a 10-year crash history and we found 12 crashes with severe injuries or worse. And of those five of them involved cyclists and pedestrians. So it's something that concerns us. It's one of, you know, we, I mean, cyclists do use it. They really don't have another option. I mean, it's the main corridor through town. And one of the other things that the study looked at was levels of service for the various users and it is very poor for pedestrians and cyclists. For pedestrians, it's poor because of poor crossing opportunities. The delay and we, myself and my designer, we've walked up and down the corridor a couple, three times today and crossing's an issue. The studies have shown that if the delay is beyond a certain amount, that people start to just cross anyway and they take risks and there's an increase of injuries and whatnot. And so that's something that's of concern to us. What the refuges do, we walked the whole distance. We started out at the landing. That's where we're staying. We stopped at Safeway on the way in. We had to cross at the signal and then we continued. We really didn't, we had to cross again to get here. We didn't really have a chance to cross until we got to the tunnel. And the reason why we were able to cross there was that you can cross in two stages. And that's what those refuges do. It gives someone a short distance to cross. You deal with one direction of traffic at a time and you can cut the delay in getting across substantially.
Well, that's one of the reasons I had brought up putting in blinking pedestrian lights on either side to have that. So that because of the fact that in the winter it's dark, most people are not visible. At that spot right there, there's a pole that blocks the other side of traffic plus the cars that are parked along there. You can't see the person that might be in the crosswalk. On both sides, there's a telephone pole. And multiple places throughout, those blinking lights that somebody pushes a button and they light up on top, we could see them 30, 40 feet out and more than likely, people are going to stop when they see them versus, and I get the island thing, but I also know they were taken out by White Cliff because an emergency vehicle couldn't get through in 1995. And so it had to be removed. And so I just see that being an issue again, especially in that spot.
I'll have to look into the history of that.
Yeah, because I know downtown, this one's being taken out for the very same reason. Those are tight, tight areas. But I think the solution is the crosswalks, and you're right, there's like very little places to put crosswalks to get across.
Right.
Those pedestrian blinking lights, like they have in Shalane and other smaller communities where there's not a lot of traffic except in the summer and really would let them know there's someone in there.
There's several, there's two that I'm aware of. One is called Rapid.
Rapid, yeah.
And then there's one that we call a Hawk. And we had one at two locations in-
I'm not talking about the ones in the ground. Just talking about that.
Yeah, there's two types. We have both types in Juneau. One of them was kind of put in as an interim measure until we got to, or something like that, but... Yeah, there's criteria associated with those and it depends on traffic, speeds, you know, the volumes and things like that. I'll have to go into the study and see how that broke out on the, they looked at it, but as far as the final-
And it wasn't you, but the last time I brought it up to DOT, I was told it wouldn't happen until someone died. And we've had someone die in a crosswalk. So my theory is this is where we're at.
Right.
We've been asking for these signs for a long time.
Right.
And like I said, yeah, our speed limit is 25, but most people do 30, 35. It's dark. It rains here. People cannot see people when they're crossing. I mean, even I, I'm paying attention. There are times where I'm like, oh, there was someone in that crosswalk.
We've had three, I think, real crosswalks that the council's been really interested in lighting up and that's the one by Tetsu. This one at the hospital, another one down by Vigor by this shipyard because they all cross over to AMP. And those seem to be the most dangerous and we really were hoping to get some kind of lighting. We tried that light in the ground thing and they don't last, the ones on the side. But those are our three real key crossings that really need some kind of lighting to alert people. And the tragedy down at Tetsu, it's going to, might have been able to be averted if there were some real lights going there because it was during a snow or rainstorm or the other.
Dark night.
Dark night and they didn't save them in the crosswalk.
You were warned dark load.
Yeah.
And we all were.
So that's been an issue with the community.
Yeah, as I'm processing, there's a table in our guidance and I don't remember exactly how it goes, but there's, under certain conditions, it's recommended and under certain conditions, it's not recommended or marginal and then under certain conditions, it's marginal. And the variables are the number of lanes crossed and the volume of traffic and the speed of the vehicles. And so, for example, near our offices, we have a project and it's very similar situation to this and we're going to, it's a three-lane configuration, but putting the refuge median gives you an opportunity to put those in because it reduces the lanes crossed. Because as the lanes, the number of lanes crossed, it tends to go from recommended to marginal and marginal to not recommended in that matrix. And I'm guessing if we crunch the numbers, we'll have a similar issue here that the refuge median gets us to a place that we can actually put those types of signals in. We've got another one going in, if you're familiar with Juneau, as you head into downtown between the bridges- We've, we've got another one going in, uh, if you're familiar with Juno, in, as you head into downtown, between the bridge and downtown, there's a place where the, where, well, actually there's, well, where one of those signals is going in. What gets us to the place of being able to install it is the refuge median, 'cause it effectively gives you one lane to cross as opposed to three. 'Cause right now it's three, or if we keep the current lane configuration, it's four. So then, then we can't put in a signal. That's kind of the variable there.
Well, I think that, you know, all the statistics and, and facts are, are one thing, but the, the reality is how people are gonna, quite, are gonna use it. For instance, this one's down here, there's no, I don't think there's any real cross or bus stop on this side, I don't know. But it's on a corner. The people that are gonna be crossing, are gonna be coming out of this parking lot, they're gonna be going right to that roadway and walking up. People at KIC is gonna come right out of the city, both over parking lot, wait, dagney right over the stairway and go in. Uh, and so you, you're not gonna catch everybody. I, I noticed on this one you took the crosswalk out, that was by KIC, uh, where it says it's called Crosswalk.
Yeah, we moved it, um.
Yeah. Yeah, because that, that, that probably didn't serve the purpose that, uh, maybe it was intended. Um, and I think really short-term, this is just paint for bike lanes. Until we improve the highway going both ways and really see what we're gonna do with it, I, I don't think there's a need to put it in in this project. And, um, as far as the ball valves are concerned, I'm gonna get into those a little bit later on down the line. Uh, I, I would be more intent to paint those on the street for a while before we use them, 'cause if you move a crosswalk, you don't have to move the wall. And I'm not so sure that those are gonna work out to the most efficient areas that we're in, so we'll talk about them when we get down there. But I'm still, I guess, opposed to the, the islands in the, in the street because of the emergency vehicles and other things that go in in regards to making.
Okay.
Continue, sir.
Okay. So basically, this is the same concept, continue. We have a refuge meeting at Third Avenue. And both at the hospital and at Third Avenue, there was significant delays in terms of, uh, highlighting the traffic study for crossing. So that's intended to address that. Another one there at Third Avenue, no, First Avenue, rather.
Jefferson down, right?
Yeah.
Yep, Jefferson and Washington.
Do they still have the turn lane here at Jefferson? They, they just made it go into one lane, similar to what it's like when you come out of McDonald's?
They took it out and it's not there anymore.
No, it's there.
Is it? To Jefferson?
Yeah.
We just have to go to the light.
Was the light there?
Yeah, the lights.
So, uh, what's your name again?
Julie.
Julie, okay. So what you were talking about is making a left off of Jefferson and to ma- have two people at a time be able to make a left onto Tongus.
Right. And the congested areas is, is, um, right here.
Mm-hmm.
So you've got Safeway and Plaza and people coming out of here and people waiting here because there's too many people in this lane here. So they're waiting to get in that lane. Well, I, I wouldn't wait if there's nobody in this lane, 'cause I know I can turn left here.
Okay.
I've got two opportunities to turn left.
So two, two lanes on Tongus Avenue to receive traffic.
Right, and the same, more in the other direction.
Okay.
I come down this way.
The high school is at the top of that hill and when it lets out, there's a lot of traffic in the bottom of the hill.
Right, and that, and, in my opinion, two, two lanes going left are needed there and there.
Okay. I will look at that. Um, and let's see here. So the, the concept of bike lane, it's kind of coming to the end. It hasn't formally ended. Oh, yes, it has. So by the time we get to Washington, the bike lane ends and then we pick up on street parking.
So where the bicycle is supposed to go?
Well, okay, I'll.
So, so, so the bike lane is only from Washington through the hospital?
Yeah, you know, the, the way we started this, I mean, we wanted, if, if we could have, we would, would have liked to do it the whole length of the corridor. But, um, you gotta do something with on, with, uh, with the parking, you know. Really, it would be nice if you could accommodate the, the, the parking needs in some other fashion. We looked at it and it's, it's not easy. I mean, if, so in the nineties, in about, from here, uh, northwards slash westwards, there was a project to, um, transfer on-street parking to off-street parking lots. And we looked at that possibility, um. If, if that's something we wanted to do, now would be the time, because we could get that paid for with federal aid. But it would be difficult and, um, you know, for it to really be successful, you have to find lots of small parking lots so that people don't walk very far. If you're making people walk a long ways, if you have a few large parking lots, it's not really very successful. So that, those are kind of the challenges of that approach. It would be nice if we could, if there was a strong desire in the community to do that. That would be definitely something worth pursuing, but it would be a heavy lift.
So I notice that you're putting parking on the water side of Tongus Avenue, down there by the, the bank building. And so you, what you're doing is just, of course, encouraging people to get out of their car across the street, because the business section of that is across the street.
Mm-hmm.
And, and it would be better, uh, to, I mean, even if we took out the bike lane, it would be better if parking was on the uphill side. If you've got a number of businesses, small businesses in all these areas here, that's to probably benefit from that. But I think putting it there, 'cause you already got all the parking in the mall and under the bank, and there's more parkings over on, uh, uh, White Clifter or whatever they call it, the street that goes down there now. So I, I don't know if that's just encouraging more pedestrians or not.
Okay.
I, I, I agree. I, I don't see that as helping and I'm not even sure it's even necessary.
So you would prefer to see that on the other side, closer to the destination?
If you're gonna put it in, put it on the other side, yeah, 'cause, 'cause there's plenty of parking on this side, on this side street.
Okay.
Like up there where the pizza place is on the other side.
Okay.
They would benefit more from the parking.
Okay.
This place right here.
Yeah. But also from the, other building.
So now we're into continuing on. We have a couple more crossing opportunities, three more, actually.
This one is a bad deal, because the people coming here have to get into this driveway here and there's no room.
Okay.
For that to work at all. I don't think it, again, I think there's a parking lot right here that people get into. I think there's an air taxi service that works in here. So the, the islands and the turn lanes, uh, kind of mess them up on traffic.
And they had an island there back in the nineties that was removed, because it blocked. When they had emergency crew trying to get through, people stopped on both sides.
Mm-hmm.
And there was no way for anybody, they couldn't get through.
Okay.
Those are just bad news and, I mean.
Yeah. And this looks kind of odd, you know? You got this taper, then you got one little pocket, then you got a bulb. I mean, if you continue the taper all the way or take the taper out?
Yeah, it's there now.
Yeah.
Um, that was constructed at some point. You can see the old curb.
Yeah, but it just doesn't make sense.
Take the taper out, take, take the bulb out and fill in the taper.
Yeah.
Yeah, something like that. I mean, it just, that little pocket in there, I know it's parking, maybe. I don't know if they get a car in there.
Well, that's where the ocean view is.
Ocean view.
It's next to it, yeah.
And that, that's, that's struggling for parking for sure.
Right. They could use some parking.
So if, if we, so that's two lanes already, correct? Today?
Um.
Uh, three lanes, with, uh, two with a turning lane, correct?
Right.
I'm trying to remember. I, I think it's generally two lanes sometimes with a third turn lane.
Yeah.
'Cause you, we're, we're into on-street parking at this point. Es- especially, particularly once you get past First Avenue.
Yeah.
And so this continues up to where we meet the, um, um, the abutment for the Viaduct, which is about near Dick's Auto Shop.
Right.
This is right there. So that's.
That's the end of the first page, right about here.
Yeah, I, I don't know if that's correctly showing the, the location of the abutment. I think it's a little further west or north. A little bit further to the left, the true location of the abutment.
So where's Dick's?
Right, Dick's right here, the button, it's right here.
Yeah, it's right there between that, right next to that building, yeah. Yeah, so it's, it's not correctly shown there on the graphic, but, uh.
And I don't know, is, uh, I don't think fish processing is working there anymore, is it?
No.
In that area. So you don't have the traffic that we used to back and forth. And, um, I don't know if this crosswalk would be better served. We put it up here where this driveway is, so you have good sight distance this way and good sight distance that way. You can go almost right across there and then you have a driveway on both sides of it.
There still are, though. I'm, I'm pretty sure that, that, um, dorm there on, on the other side of Dixonburg is still being used for.
This one right here.
It's still being used for housing, for the folks from, from Phillips.
Yeah, but.
Really?
Yeah.
That was pretty empty, this.
Okay, well, I've, I've seen people going back and forth across this, this, so I'm assuming that's where they were going, maybe, maybe they were going to Dick's Audio House.
Yeah.
Well, maybe, I.
Phillips has housing in there.
Yeah, I think they do.
Do they?
Says housing.
So that's pretty much it, um, as far as this, uh, this one. I'm gonna show the schedule, which is on the next sheet. So this, this actually is kind of an internal schedule. I took it out of an email that we were, came from one of the people that works in our group there. And this is kind of, it, it gives you an idea of the milestones that we have to kind of hit in order to, um, get her under construction next summer. And it's a heavy lift. Um, I mean, with all the discussion we have, I'm kind of wondering if we can really meet the first one, agency scoping. You know, for us to really proceed forward, we need, we need to have, you know, consensus on what we're doing. So, I mean, just, let, let's just say, assume that we did. Uh, so we have to send out, uh, notification to various agencies that we, you know, that have some sort of jurisdiction. Um, the, of what we're doing, what we intend to do. The, the, the public workshop where we would come back and have the public, you know, in general weigh in. And then, um, the close of public comments, that's for the public in general and also agencies. We would expect, um, emails and letters back from various agencies. A findings letter that has to do with anything that is, is of a historic nature. Um, that's, that's a document that we send to the State Historic Preservation Office. And they have like thirty days to concur with our findings letter. So thirty days out from that, in January, we would be signing an environmental document. We can't even proceed with acquiring right-of-way until that's in place. Uh, complying with, um, ADA. I, I anticipate having a lot of driveway issues where we, where we, uh, correct cross slopes on our, in the sidewalks. We have to then connect, in turn, connect with various driveways, um, that may need, uh, right-of-way. Or a right-of-way just to, to reconnect, so that it, it would be challenge, challenging to, to get that. And plus, it's, this is an urban corridor, the urban corridors are really complex. Um, I, I'm just in the process of getting one out to bid in, in Juno and that was, it was a lot of work. But anyway, so that, a lot of things have to hap- happen in order for us to be advertising about April one. Um, in order for us to be under construction next summer. And, and the urgency there is, is, um, you know, the condition of the road surface. Um, and it, that, and that's, that's what's pushing us to, to, to really get at the, the pavement rehab. But, you know, we gotta have, you know, some consensus on, on some, what we're doing in the corridor, basically, first.
Well, I agree that paving should be the main priority of this thing and I don't think we should overcomplicate it. Uh, I know that there's probably some areas where the sidewalks have failed or there's been cutouts that have been built in front of, maybe. And there may be some ADA issues, I don't know.
Well, the, the problem with the ADA thing, that, it, the, the, the ADA is if we, if we make improvements, we're pretty much required to, um, comply with, bring, bring the corridor up to ADA. That's kind of the thing that.
Even just on a repave of a highway?
Yeah. Yeah, that's, that's the part that we, we can't just ignore it.
Yeah. Well, we, we save some time, you don't have to put, uh, center islands in and paint it crosswalk, I mean, uh, bike lanes.
I think, um, the council's issues are that the bike lanes, the islands and crosswalks, which ones delight are the things that we, you know, to me, um, I, I'd rather have parking than bike lanes. If you had more parking down there, I mean, with the hospital, the way it's running and everything in that whole area, um, you need par- we, all the parking we can get, so that's our three issues to take back.
Yeah, Lou?
Yes, sir.
I, I kind of said here, it was quiet for a while, but, uh, I think I agree with everybody saying here is we don't want to go down to three lanes. The bike lane, I can't even justify it. I think I measured off maybe six tenths of a mile in the middle of the whole stretch. It's, to me, a ridiculous idea. The island sitting in the middle of the third lane, what do you say about it? And if, uh, if there's parking on there, I think it's probably okay, but I don't want it to add parking, 'cause every idiot that opens these doors is gonna get it tore off. Especially if we go down to three lanes and you can't go anywhere. So to me, pave it and forget it if we have to.
Generally.
I actually like the bike lanes, because there's gonna be more bikes, probably. Because I know there's a couple rentals for tourists and there was plenty of them out this summer. But the other thing, with the bulb, the, um, center aisle things, that just justifies drivers just keep driving. People stuck in an island waiting for someone to stop and, and not an emergency thing. 'Cause they did, they put a net back in the nineties and it was not a good thing.
Julie? I'm sorry. Julie, then, Mark?
Just a, a quick comment, but I really need, I need to show you, so I, I just need you to go back to where you got Jefferson and Washington on the screen. So, uh, just comments that were brought to me by people. If you do end up not doing the bike lane and we've still got the lanes that we have currently, uh, since we have the high school, the college, and then this way, a major grocery and the plaza, I'd like to see if, if not designated left-turn lanes, then at least a sign, 'cause you're gonna redo the signal lights, that says, um, left turn only during the hours of seven to nine in the morning. I mean, I mean, not during the hours of seven to nine in the morning or four to six in the evening. You know the sign I'm talking about, right? Where, you know, and, and maybe it'll be enforced, maybe not, but some people will see that sign and they won't turn between seven and nine in the morning, because those are the busy times, seven and nine.
Okay.
Seven, six. Or put.
If you could like write that out and
Yeah.
have it sent to me. I, I, I've, I'm, I wanna make sure I understand what you're talking about. I, I, I think I know, but it'd probably be easier if you like wrote it down and had it emailed me or had it sent to me. I, we have stuff like that in, in Juno where it gets really busy, it's like, you know, no left turns between certain times, you know? Because it just backs up forever.
Right, and it does get backed up.
Mm-hmm.
Because we have major destinations, people are trying to get to the college, the high school. People are trying to get to the grocery store and Plaza, gas station.
And there's a turn lane down there. You can always go up Washington.
Right, there's options.
That's what I always do, yeah.
Mark?
Nothing, you're all right. I think it's been well said by, by everybody else. I, I think maybe if we could just compile a consensus and send it up in writing, that's our best bet. We know what we need as locals. You had made mention at the beginning of working in partnership with the community. And we understand from previous conversations about the crosswalks, the, the state statutes. But quite frankly, sometimes those just get in the way of what we know is best for our own community and common sense. So I think if we could get you maybe a short punch list of where this needs to go, that, that would probably be our best input.
Lacy, do you want to add something?
I just wanted to add that, um, the Public Works Director, Mark Hilsen, we can, we can compile some of these thoughts with the assistance of the clerk's office, so, and submit them to Mr. Tripp.
Yeah.
Dave?
Yeah, just real quickly, I, I do appreciate the fact you guys are trying to fast-track the middle section. But I wanna make sure the two parts don't get lost. Whenever I see something that's like more than two or three years on a stiff, it's kind of like, it may happen, it may not happen.
Well, I, I, I. Those other pieces were slowing everything down.
No, I know. And, 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 and I know it's a long, it's, it's a long process. And the bridge is interesting. Um, I don't know if you saw it, a, a, a few, a few months ago, there was one of those weird stories on national media about, you know, fifty, fifty dangerous bridges in America, and guess which one for Alaska was, the Holy Creek one. Now, I don't think it's dangerous, but even the state agrees it's structurally efficient. So I want, I would like to see that moved ahead.
Bob?
So, uh, first of all, I'd like to thank you for, NDOT, for taking the, uh, the position that they have. We've been working with them on the Stedman Street and Fudd Street and they've been, the, the, um, communications has been by far better than it ever has been in the past. And I, I really appreciate that. In regard to the Holy Creek Bridge and the fact that how long that would take that port for Tongus out of service, is there? poor Fentongas out of service, is there an opportunity to put a fish culvert under that and then remove the bridge after the fact and just do a fill?
Uh, we could look at it.
I mean, there's plenty of room under, I think there's plenty of room under the bridge, I don't know. But if you could leave the bridge in place while they construct that underneath, because usually those go into a concrete thing and they still leave the gravel bottom.
You know, shooting from the hip, I think it's a bit of a challenge, because right now, the opening, a fish culvert would give you a smaller opening than you have now, and the opening is pretty tight underneath the bridge. That was highlighted as as a challenge for us. If we could make it bigger, we would, we can't. I mean, the we we put in, we were looking at bridge options, we were looking at option have girders that aren't quite as deep to open up that space a little bit. We're also looking at the water line that has its own support structure. Is there anything we could do with that to open it up a little bit? That's a bit of a challenge.
To our drain line would be tough there, yeah.
Yeah.
This is a thought. What about paving? Have you analyzed how, I mean, right now, you're using hard aggregate, which I really appreciate, and I think you're using a product maybe called SuperPave, but does that work well when you got a concrete base that you're putting asphalt on? It seems like it's just a hammer and handle thing for us, and we just-
Well, you know, the the Sup- SuperPave, that's a wearing course, so you're using hard aggregate that is more resistant to stud wear. The the concrete, it's it's like a super base, you know? I mean, we, I mean, it it's it's a great asset, in my opinion. There's some places where it might need to be repaired, but, you know, normally, we have some sort of gravel base, and here we have concrete, so, you know, and the asphalt's basically a wearing course on top of it.
I just I just wonder if there was certain elements of it that, you know, because you got such a good base, a hard base, that the asphalt we use doesn't just get hammered by the by the traffic point, that if there's something better, I don't know if there is or not, I mean-
Well, it does need to be redone from time to time. I mean, we just did a a project in Juneau on on Eagan between the valley and into downtown, where we did rut it out, and we redid basically the top two inches. And essentially, that's that's as far as the pavement rehab, that's what we're looking at here.
Thank you.
Go get some comments sent back up to you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Ken, can you hit the lights? All right, that brings us to the emergency thing that I forgot all about.
Do you have the other emergency?
Yeah.
Once we're gonna declare it all fixed.
We have a motion for the leak with the Shonbar Road Water Main. Do we have a motion?
Section three point one, two point zero, three five. I think it's D three, D five, D five of the Ketchikan Municipal Code. I move the City Council to declare that Tonbar Road Water Main leak, and reconstruction required to restore the Water Main Road. As a public relation, the Director General Manager to proceed with the procurement of such contractors, equipment, and materials as necessary to repair the Tonbar Road Water Main and reconstruct it away upon the completion of the repair.
Second. Good in second, any questions?
Your Honor?
Go ahead.
It's, I guess, John's here, and I know it's still an unknown because they haven't dug up the road yet, but is it a service line leak, or is it a main? Or do you know for sure, John, what we're dealing with up there?
No, basically, this is the main line that's the entire supply for the community. It's a thirty-six inch main. I have some photographs of the last one we repaired back in two thousand eleven, if you'd like to see what we expect to dig up.
Yeah, and so I did see in there that you may come with another project in the future to slip line out of that track.
That may be the best solution. If we find the pipe, in this area is fairly deteriorated like it was over by Shonbar Creek. Other places where we've dug the pipe up in front of Valley Court, or there where the UV facility is built, it's in a condition that's almost like what it looked like when we put it in twenty-five years ago. But this particular area, for whatever reason, is extremely corrosive. And at at least in the portion that we found by Shonbar Creek, the joints between the eighteen foot bell joints had not been bonded, and so the cathodic protections system that we have installed couldn't resist the corrosion. We may find, as we dig down tomorrow night, we may see a similar situation.
So, from my understanding, you guys are gonna start at four o'clock on Friday night and work through the evening to try to get this thing excavated, repaired, and put back together?
Yes.
All right, thanks, Sean. Any other questions? Call the roll.
Gage?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Kifer?
Yes.
Seivertson?
Yeah.
Flora?
Yes.
Coos?
Yeah.
Okay, that passed at six and a half, and that brings us finally down to managers' report, or vouchers, not managers' report. Do you have anything, Lacy?
I do, just-
No vouchers?
No vouchers this time.
You should have got one last big one in there, just cause-
All right. I just wanted to bring to the council's attention that we've started a diesel campaign, just to remind them, and we're off to a little bit of a rocky start with the bag one generator at Bailey having some issues. But we're back on track, and again, just a reminder that we are in the process of hiring the one additional mechanic per FERC's recommendation, and on the October eighteenth meeting, we'll have a representative from FERC here in town to give a presentation and further address the issue of the additional mechanic.
Oh, Dave?
Speaking of KPU, so I guess I guess the good news is that is that power outages have become so infrequent that we noticed them now. We have noticed three, four, some some number in the last couple of months, and they're all those abrupt ones, which usually seem to indicate a problem or something. Is there something going on that we need to know about, or is there?
I'm actually going to defer to Mark. From my understanding, it's the outages recently have been kind of a combination of bird strikes and then also issues with- Also issues with the STI, the Swan Taiyi Intertai.
Okay.
Yeah, Mark Adams, Operations Manager. Saturday's outage was related to Swan Lake. There was a problem up there with the low lake level and the control mode that it was in. There was an issue with the water pressure and the pen stock configuration, so that's what that's what Saturday's route was.
All that lingo tells us nothing, but-
Yeah, I just I just kind of know, you know, as as I guess, as a as a business owner, I've I've noticed a greater problem when the power goes out, particularly when ships are in. So I guess, you know, make it not happen again, please.
Thank you, Mark. All right, anything else, Lacy?
That is it.
All right, that brings us down to City Clerk's file.
Your Honor, I just want to remind the council that we have a meeting on Monday night to certify the election, so please, don't forget to come. And then we also have a training on Thursday that will be fairly brief, and I hope lots of fun. Kim and I have been working on it for a little bit. And I just want to say, seeing as how this is your last-
I'll be here Monday.
I know, but I don't have a chance to talk on that. So, it's been a pleasure working-
Thank you very much.
With you all these jillions of years, at least. And I don't think that anybody who, if they have an opportunity to sit next to you, they know exactly how much ink can go onto a piece of paper that already- A lot of, a lot of writing on it, it's amazing, it's truly an art.
You've already kind of those, right?
And and I'm especially going to miss, even though I will only have one remaining after you leave, the, in the executive session room, there's going to be a very lonely hole in the table. It's about the size of a notebook paper, that I think in my head of as the mayor's doodle hole, you just kind of spin your pen, and then you catch yourself and you make yourself stop. I was gonna call it your art hole, but I needed- Anyway, it's been fun.
Well, thank you very much. This is how I let my anxieties with you guys. You need more ink. Yeah. All right, that brings the city attorneys, file.
Yes, sir.
Not here. Future agenda items? Now, Mayor Council comments, Dick?
Yeah, just, I guess maybe two. One, I assume we're gonna write a letter to the DOT about what our comments were tonight, because I think we don't want some things to happen that they want to happen. The second one is, I think that we should have, probably to be the next mayor, craft a letter to send to the Forest Service and to the State Roadless Area Committee, expressing our support for what they're doing, and probably suggesting, and my suggestion is that we recommend that they abandon the roadless rule totally, because it doesn't make any sense for Alaska. And I would probably ask beforehand to have Mr. Seivertson-
We have more hands for the Mr. Seivertson, send that, one, two, three, four, shall be five, shall be six, shall be- Anything else, Dick?
Nope.
General Lee?
Well, I can't, I guess we know what to get you for a present when it comes to doodling. Extra paper, pretty pencils, and big, huge-
Lots of old agendas.
Yes, yes, yes. And the only other thing I was gonna say is, with, I know you didn't do the whole cigarette thing, but I think we're probably gonna have to look at butt containers. I had to throw that, you know?
Thank you.
Where people can put their butts.
Anything else?
About the docs wore butt containers.
Yeah, Dave.
Julie, yeah, anything?
No.
Bob?
Yeah, of course, we are on diesel right now. We had an unfortunate situation, we're bagged one spun marrying, and I think we had a little hiccup with one of the cat in the box or something, I'm not sure. But, you know, those diesels are fairly old, and at some point, they run out of their service life. Bag one and two, from what I understand, it's almost impossible to get parts for those. And then there is the cost associated, when you do have to get something for it, it has to be custom built. I heard numbers for a turbine for something that we have down there that we estimate maybe two hundred thousand, and because of the, I'll think it's almost eight hundred thousand, so when do you stop investing that money into an old piece of equipment and start looking at a new piece of equipment? And then there's also the discussion about, well, do we spread our assets out rather than leave them all in one place? That's another whole conflict. So I think that I would like to have staff start to work up something in regards to a replacement plan, the cost. We should be putting money away for this thing at some point, and so it doesn't come with a big sticker shock when we get there. And and some of the options, you know, maybe we need the cat in the box type thing, but it's a bigger cat, you know, maybe it's three mags or something, and we have a couple of those around town, I don't know. But I think it's, we need to start looking at that, we can't run these things forever in the situation we have now. And then, in regards to the mechanic work we're doing on those, I know we're in diesel runs and we're shorthanded and stuff, but I know that there are a couple of those guys that used to work down there, and they're contractors now, and if we need to expedite some of this stuff, we can always think about contract services to services to help aid in in getting things back together. And then I'd like to thank our clerk, Katie. I invited her to join me to speak to the American Government classes at the high school. She did a very good job. We went up on Election Day and talked to them about elections and how that all happened, and what the, how how the history of that, we're getting to machines that we have today, and what we may be looking at in the future. And I think you actually did sign up a couple of orders over there. And then we talked about SB sixty-three, and there's gonna be a cost associated with that, because it sounds like it comes with a lot of signage. And we're now doing an inventory to try to figure out where those signs are gonna be. And then you come up with the idea, okay, now you got a state law, so it's an unfunded mandate, yet somebody has to enforce that, and how are we gonna do that? You know, right now, we have somebody doing pocket and barking, is that gonna be the same type of individual, rather than try to have the patrol officer dealing with that and they're dealing with everything else? So I think we have to think about how we're gonna manage that and look forward. And then if you'll notice in in some of the manager report, we're still working on moving the pellet boiler at the library forward, and there's some insurance issues and different things, and design issues and criteria. I think that our Public Works Director has been looking at other facilities with him and talking to contractors, and I'm hoping that we can get that corrected over there so we have the dual fuel capabilities and and efficiency. And then, I know we got another meeting yet, Lou, but I'd like to thank you for all your services. I just kind of follow Lou around, you know, he became mayor and I became a council member, and now he's going out the door and I'm coming in after him, so. But thank you for your service.
Thanks, Bob. Dave?
Uh, yeah, also, congratulations to Councilmember Gage for returning to this, I'm not sure why you wanted to, but, you know, congratulations. And congratulations to Mr. Bergeron, who are off my record, who joined us on this, I guess, buddy. And of course, Mayor, I'm sorry, prospective Mayor Seivertson, though I want the record to reflect, you'll actually be Mayor Bob the Fifth. The Fifth. There have been, there have been four previous Mayor Bobs. I had to consult my records, but there have been four, there have been four previous.
Hey, Mark?
Couple things, Your Honor. I was invited to be part of a committee with the city shop and firefighters, and we are going through an evaluation process of looking at ladder one refurbishment versus replacement. It's been a heck of an education already. I think it's a good combination of the technical expertise of the fire department, the technical expertise of the city shop, and having a council member on there can't hurt, because budget season will be looming, and in the end, we also still need to keep in mind the best use of city money. Hopefully, we'll have an update for you guys pretty soon. On another note, congratulations to General Lee, Mr. Bergeron, and our incoming mayor. Look forward to working with all you folks for the next couple of years. Lou, you paying attention?
No, yeah.
No, please carry on. He's doodling, he's- And Monday night, you'll get a, you'll get a proper, thank you.
All right, for you guys, I am going to say I have nothing to say. So that brings us down to executive session. We do have a motion. Do we have a-
Your Honor, I move the City Council going to executive session in accordance with Ketchikan Municipal Code two oh four oh two five eight two for the purpose of discussing a successor contract for the position of city clerk, which may involve discussion of subjects that tend to prejudice the reputation and character of any person, provided the person may request a public discussion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Move to the second, call the roll.
Coos?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Seivertson?
Yes.
Kifer?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Gage?
Yep.
Okay, that passed at six and a half, and we'll go into executive session. Will, adjourn me there in three minutes, I gotta run to my car real quick. Adjourn now to the executive session, we're now back in the regular session, I believe. Julie, you have a motion for us?
I do, Your Honor.
Go ahead.
I move the City Council offer the position of city clerk to Kim Stanker at an annual salary of seventy-five percent of the current clerk's salary, and under such contract terms as will be determined by the City Council.
Second.
So she is going to be, do we need a motion maker, city clerk or acting city clerk?
He's acting-
Offer the position of city clerk. And that would become official in May.
Yeah, okay.
Acting city clerk.
Oh, very good. All right, I think we've talked about it enough. Call the roll.
Coos?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Seivertson?
Yes.
Kifer?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Gage?
Yippee!
That is the curve six to zero. I don't think we have any other business. I'll see you guys on Monday.
We gotta just tie her up so she can't leave.
I gotta go move me.
Sorry.
What kind of pie do you make?
I make hot pie.
No, no, but I don't care.